I personally.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. The, the way I see it today, based on this year's budget. We, and, and if the bridge went away today, we have a three and a half million dollar problem this year. And that problem is going to grow every year with at least inflation. And if you assume inflation is at four percent a year. That number is going to grow by twenty-six percent. By the year the bridge opens up in twenty twenty-nine. So it's not a three and, three and a half million dollar, it's over four million dollar problem per year if we do nothing. So to me, as we talk about this, we come up with ideas, we've got to figure out. How much of this does it slice off that three and a half million this year, or as it continues to grow in the future years? And if we can't talk about that, one of the actions should be is go figure it out. That should be one of our litmus tests. You know, if, if we've got X amount of funds to be able to invest. Which is going to give us the biggest rate of return to work off that deficit? And I, I think there's just some, some rules of the road that perhaps we need to think about. As we go into these discussions. And does it check off the boxes? And if it doesn't check off the boxes, well, maybe we don't need to talk about.
And we can talk about that in each, on each of these areas, there are. Though each area is going to be very different about what we can do, what the timeframe is, and what the potential returns are.
Exactly. Some of them are going to require a lot more investment, and that's fine. As long as it gives us a rate of return that more than pays for it, helps us position down the road.
Right. And some of these areas that we're currently making money on would be redevelopment, what could we make more, some areas that we have bare land will be. New development and new revenue sources, which is what we really need.
Yes.
And then are we, and then what are we open to as far as that is concerned? We'll start with lot one, as far as that is concerned, where I want to know where we are, then let's discuss. In that develop, lot one development, and I'll put, you know, the east side there as part of it. What do we need to see, what do we want to see? And then staff will be able to get numbers together for us on it, because of it, well, you can do that, but it's going to end up costing you a hundred grand a year.
Right.
Is a little bit different than, well, now you have this, and here's your revenue streams coming in.
The other thing I believe we ought to be talking about in setting the rules. Is do we have to assume that what we've done in the past, we're limited to what we have to do in the future? Classic point is zoning. Are we willing to go to bat to try and change the zoning laws? If it makes more financial sense? Even though it may take us an investment of two or three or four years to get it done. Are we willing to put in the effort to make that change?
Tell us where we're at on lot one.
Um, well, I'll take you with Greg on that. He, he wrote about it in, in your paper in the memo. Um, we have a million dollars in grant funding that needs to be expended by June of twenty twenty-three. That is to pay for architecture and engineering. Um, if we don't spend it, we could maybe ask for an extension. I don't think for sure we'd have to give it all back, but there's certainly the risk there. Um, as you know, we contracted with Lorraine, our, no, I'm missing Elaine. To do the space to analysis of opportunities within the U R A, you know. I personally don't feel like that's going to go anywhere, but it was worth doing a lot of numbers and, and, you know, Kristi, you might have a different opinion or Heather on the U R A. Their tolerance level there for the extension of the waterfront zone, but.
But we haven't had a report back from.
Yeah, you haven't had any power yet, but they are actually, they were at the last week waiting for some data from Abigail and she has since given that to us. So, um, so there's some there. Um, I think the most that we can hope for in that scenario is about one point seven million. And that would be a stretch, I think, so it doesn't completely fill the gap. Um, the whole rationale behind the East Anchor Way is that. It's, it's the way that the port can prepare those parcels for development without really having to decide what the development is. Your comment about the zoning is right on. But in order for anything to go there, we've got to have the infrastructure in place, and we have to have those roads and utility work done. So prior commissions have said, okay, well, that's something we can say yes to, because it has to be done, and we don't have to decide what goes on the land. But at least something can go on the land by doing that project. So that was the sort of the rationale behind the fundraising there.
So what's the total number?
It depends on, on the wish list, on how big it is. I think where, where are we at?
Yeah, so, yeah, check me on that, but it was a twenty nineteen grant proposal. It was basically work, preliminary work for a grant application. And I wanted to say for both Anchor Way and First Street, it was four and change, four million and change.
And for the whole Walker Macy kitten caboodle dream, you know, scenario, it was around twelve point five.
All right, that was the number that I heard, and that's, I think, a past dream. I'm just talking about getting.
Right.
Infrastructure and roads taken care of and utilizing twenty-five percent of it-ish, it's already in the bank, twenty, twenty-five, call it twenty percent.
In terms of development with current zoning. If we do North First Street relocation at the same time that we do Anchor Way. We, you know, obviously save money on mobilization and doing both at the same time. But that immediately gives us that little nickel space in West Edge area. Do you do four or five commercially zoned buildings? Or food carts or something like that could go there immediately upon completion of that project.
Which is already commercially allowed, zoning that way. Okay, then we can, which gives us a little more flexibility as far as zone one proper.
Yeah, so it's like a long term and short term at the same time. So you build those roads, infrastructure. For the long-term ability to develop the rest of lot one, regardless of what goes there. But then also in the short term is we can immediately do these little commercial buildings. On the west edge, what Greg should speak to is the new issues with the hotel and the water lines there. And how that might affect our ability to.
Could I ask a question on, once you've already stated? If we decided down on lot one. Magically, we decide to put in a really large again center. Something with an auditorium, multi-use. With green areas around a parking lot. Would, do we have enough room to do that if we put the streets in? In lot one and we divide it up now? Or should we hold off on the streets, bring utilities into the general area? But then let that developer move whatever they need to move to, to work the issue.
That's a valid point. Um, I think circulation is a key point in that grants funding that's through ODOT. And so that by creating that, that separation, if you will, you now have better circulation throughout the entire area. If you've ever been down there in the winter when they're, they've got eight four closed, it's got semi-stacked, and it gets pretty bunched in there. I think that's part of the reason why ODOT was so motivated to help us put some more infrastructure in place. But that is a valid point. I mean, I think you, that, that cart is waiting for the horse, though, with regard to. Whether it's even achievable at this point, so not knowing the actual footprint of said desirable event space. It's kind of hard to answer those questions without, without having that in front of.
But where I was kind of going with this, Greg, is that. Could we get the utilities into the general area? For the million dollar grant, or how much more would we have to add to the million dollar grant? And then we take whatever else we had set aside, and we go use it elsewhere where we could get a rate of return quicker.
Yeah, but maybe we'd have to balance that against the requirements of the ODOT loan that we have. And if it requires us to put an infrastructure that increases circulation, we're kind of bound.
That's a question, get that question answered.
You're going to move the utility, why wouldn't you move it because you need? Have access to the utility.
I agree. Any, any utilities that are incomplete when we do this, you're going to be ripping up roads eventually to fix that. The other thing to consider is the whole intersection at Portway would have to be taken out. You're going to build a whole intersection that as soon as you develop First Street goes away. So you would save, you know, I don't know what that's going to be, but a hundred thousand dollars saved easily. I mean, in, in a heartbeat, you're going to save that much. This particular project makes sense to do both at the same time. Because it covers the infrastructure that allows you to keep going. But there, it can be just turned over to a developer, and whatever costs there are in development, it could be theirs.
The only concern I have gone is if we dissect that property with roads. Does that take the value away from a very large project down there? And if the answer is no, cool. If, if the answer is yes, then maybe we ought to think about that.
And I think Commissioner Fox's, the point that he's making is something you've heard. And the idea he has is something you've heard before from me, you've heard it from him, you've heard Commissioner Chapman speak on this as well. I, you know, there's. You know, I, I want to know how everybody thinks, but there's some consensus starting to brew on what we think would be best there as far as serving the broader community. I think having tailored questions like what is going to be required of that? But I, I absolutely understand, you want to do this all at once, I think. So what I'd like to know is what our grant requires. Do, what does Fred say as far as the money, if it seems nuts to me to throw away a million bucks? Okay, can we make four and a half happen next year and do this project or not? Um, and we'll, let's look into if that is what we believe should be down there, I think. I also believe that having the commercial down there is an important component of this to get some revenue generation. Any, and any facility that we decide to build at whatever scale, we'll want to get some revenue off of as well, we can. Um, but the commercial is going to add to that. Um, you know, with the parking requirements, we've got plenty of green space requirements. I'm, I'm on board with it. I want to know exactly what we need to do and what we can do. But I think that's your question, we're going to find out what the grant requires.
Yeah, so, so another piece to this question that you kind of brought up, and it's a great one. What's the minimum development we have to do down there to release this to be able to use commercial along the strip?
So currently it's zoned under the, the current waterfront overlay zone is Sub Area One. Fortunately, there's not necessarily the available footprint, because the road extends, we've got our park with Nickel Basin. And then it, where we would be building in the future theoretically would be where the road is now. And so we'd be creating buildable land space if we were to rebuild the first street.
So now that kind of makes some sense. Have we done any industrial or, uh, business development? To see who would want to have a, a restaurant or something down there?
So they're, yeah, I mean, they're, they're only, it's a seven thousand square foot, uh, pad. So it's still going to be smaller, uh, kind of kiosk type businesses. You're not going to have a grand restaurant in that location because of the current, that, that, yeah, a coffee shop, a board shop.
Recreational gap focused businesses.
Yeah, but what it does do is it would change the, the concept to the community's mind of vertical construction down there on the waterfront. And that makes it a little easier to enter into those community engagement. Uh, conversations of what it should be rather than it should be in a field or a farmer's market. Now they start to see vertical construction. And that conversation gets a little bit different than where it currently is.
So one, one question that I have for the grant, would it satisfy the grant if, because obviously the grant's not going to fund both first and all of anchor?
The grant is basically just architecture and engineering. It's really no construction money at all.
Okay.
Yeah, the construction money will come either from another grant or out of our, our reserves.
Okay.
Can I ask a quick question? So on the, uh, ODOT had the requirements for Anchor Way.
Yeah.
So it, because I, I've heard a lot about first going in, there was a lot of interest more about first going in versus anchor. Will ODOT allow first to be redeveloped before anchor?
That's a good question.
Yeah, that's valid. I couldn't see that it wouldn't inhibit the Anchor Way project from First Street to building. In fact, if anchor goes first and First Street doesn't take place, then we'd have to demolish part of improvements just to relocate the road.
Yeah.
And so to Commissioner Fox's question about, let's think about shortening the return on investment. What can we do, you know, in, in a sense, it seems like more First Street relocation. Occurring before East Anchor Way, even though it would be optimal if they could happen at the same time for the development of the remaining parcel.
Yeah, if we, if we're looking at, don't worry about rate of return, you know, what makes.
Timing.
Yeah, uh, construction sense, yeah, go in and open at once and get it done, but. In a tight budget like where we are, doesn't it make more sense to take that money? And you and I talked a little bit about run up there and build a, a dozen tea hangers, because there's a waiting list. We can turn that around real fast.
Maybe that's part of the response we're going to get back, take a look at that.
Yeah.
Because we do need to make a decision on, you know, we don't just have time now, I think. Oh, let's do the utilities in a year. That, that would be a poor decision, because then you throw away a million dollars.
Exactly.
Um, so.
Also too, bear in mind, every two years you have a turnover in board and everything, and I've experienced that. For the last turnover, so, um, you guys talk about direction, you need to shorten that timeline and do it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Jerry and I over at Walker Macy, we, we had a, a vision, and the board changed, and that vision is no longer there. So I was sort of reiterate, you need to act fast. Get your steps in a row and move forward, because like you said, year or two years in a row, that's not going to work out. We got back to the same situation we're in now.
Also considering what's been invested in moving those directions already is in the millions.
Yeah, yeah.
Be ashamed to let that money go to waste now. I realize that it's possibly a different direction, but that's a huge investment on our part. To go a direction that we're going to reverse and not go.
Right, and what's there? I mean, this is two different conversations. What's sitting there is less important than being able to put it there today. Utilities, I don't care what's there today, do you want to do utilities or not? Valid question about will that prevent us from doing something else, which I can start to look into, but the real question is. Do we move forward, like get a, say, proposal to do this next year and use that grant or not? We can answer the other questions.
Yeah.
As part of that proposal.
I'll propose something. I think you ought to look at what's the minimum amount to get. Get utilities into the area that maintains flexibility of use of that area. But at the same time opens us up where we can develop very quickly that commercial side. Of seven, what was it, seven thousand?
Yeah, they limited.
I'd, I'd almost like to see us think about that and do that as part of this program. As the next quick phase, and we ought to be able to do that within the year.
You need to build, you need to build, construct the buildings.
Or, or at least get the utilities right there that either we do it or somebody else does it.
And let's see, you know, to be clear, is that possible while not throwing away a ton of money, having to redo something to get the rest of it done? And, you know, if you're, if it's ten bucks here and there, okay, but if it's a half a million dollars, you go back and tear something up just to finish it. Then the wise investment is to do it all right now. So we need that.
That's a tough decision to make, and you don't know the end result. As a developer, you just, you look at that, you go. You know, when you build your property, you, you know, you had buildings there, you knew the requirement, you knew the power source requirement, water source requirement. You just, that's a tough one, where we're doing pieces, because you don't know what you're, you're trying to achieve the end, it's harder to develop.
Well, I don't think we should do it in pieces, but I do think it's a valid question we should get an answer to. I think it's going to come back as a recommendation to do it all at once.
So the, the concept that you are, are getting to consensus about, would that require. Uh, East Anchor Way to be in a different place or to not exist at all? Do you want to see looking at?
Well, I think it has to, I think it's an ODOT requirement. It's not enough to go in, but I, I think that the question is, is where on that? When we cut through, do we want to? Fifty fifty, do we want a sixty forty split? Like, it's going to cut the property in half, lot one.
We're going to have to go straight across, make a way.
Yeah. It's got to match the way for the meet ODOT's flow pattern that they researched in the beginning of this.
Right, and that's not quite fifty fifty, but it gives, call it forty sixty, forty minutes outside. How, it, it's, it would be somewhere in the neighborhood of a couple of acres. For whatever structure we decide, we would like to see the community there. And more than a couple acres on the other side for perhaps parking and green space and whatever else we decide.
We need to study any of the other designs, we studied earlier as far as desirability for a developer and. No one wants to touch it without having infrastructure, saving up left and right.
That was the line. When we say infrastructure, I'm thinking about in the corner. But inside the road area, they're bringing in utilities, they're bringing in sewer, they're bringing in power and so on, but it's stubbed up.
Stubbed up in the property line, that's one way of looking at it, yeah.
Oh, yeah, and then, then you've got total freedom as a developer to put whatever you want to. Once you get it in the area, pulling that stuff in is relatively cheap.
But I think that the, oh, thank you, Greg. Very helpful.
And, and you're right, getting, I think you were saying, get utilities, and you get the road and get the utilities, you don't need to run utilities into the, the. Specific properties, but just stop it right there, so a developer can then put in one thing right there. And that's, that's, that's what we're talking about.
The only thing, I don't think it'll be something ready for ODOT approval for any development without Anchor Way.
No, that's what we're talking about, that's first, that's first, getting these roads done and getting utilities throughout, ready to go into the dirt.
I thought we were distinguishing between stub outs and a road.
Stub outs to the property, not the actual mains, call it, going around, right?
You're talking about utilities, but as far as right of ways, it's established in hard surface, right?
Yes.
It's direct.
There are municipal conveyances.
But that's something I've got to get on the same page, to get a direction before the board at all.
That's why I want, I was.
I don't think the location of the road is.
Doesn't sound like it probably be negotiable, because it has to come across Anchor Way.
Yeah, okay.
But it's like there's enough space either on the north or south side that you could put a nice bit. So, so then, then what we're talking about here is bringing utilities in. I would say. If we're going to go ahead and put this road in and, and stick the utilities in one of the corners and don't try and move utilities across the area. Put it in one spot and leave it alone.
Essentially make it look like that with utilities underground.
Now, do we have to move this, this road at all?
If you want the commercial to the right there, which you're talking about, you do.
The lighter green is currently what is road right now, so that would be created buildable space.
Yeah, it's a two-lane boulevard right now.
You know, for me, that's no brainer.
Yeah.
We need a commercial to create activity and energy and good cash flow and.
Well, no, because then we all have to realize that, you know, the Walker Macy plan is, when would that develop? Sixteen years ago?
Sixteen.
And we can all assess, we can all agree, I believe, that a lot has changed on the whole waterfront in the last sixteen years. The, you know, I mean, sixteen years ago, um, no one thought a pizza place would make it down there, you know, so.
And, and that's a valid point, you know, you need that vibration, you need that, you know, energy down there. For anybody to, to do any of all and be successful, you need a twenty-four, seven, twelve months out of the year.
Yeah.
And we are seasonal here, so if we can minimize that for any investor, then they get more year-round cash flow.
Transit Center?
No, is ODOT making us do this?
Yes, that's part of that whole thing, you have to do that. Um, so I guess what we need, what we need to do, so I'm going to oversimplify this. Do we want to see a proposal on making it look like that with utilities and getting everything ready to go? Call it shovel ready, make it look like that, use the grant money, what's it look like, what's our investment need to be, and when can we do it? Do we need, do we want to see that?
I'd say, yeah, I do.
I personally do, I think it's a safe concept. I think it meets all.
So when can we see that?
It's, we just would have to update the numbers, so it's all ready.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's a design grant.
Yeah, it's a.
That's, we'll need to go out for, we'll need to procure an engineering contract.
Get, get going.
Okay.
I think that should be a big priority.
As in, yeah, Commissioner Fox, I would also add that in the concern that maybe separating it into, you minimize footprint of, of convention center. But you also provide more opportunity for more retail spaces, so we can have.
I agree, I think it's big enough that we can get something in there.
Yeah.
And I'll go to the, create the phase in that there. Now, the, the next step to this, I think we ought to be talking about right now, too. Okay, okay, this kind of is the footprint lined up. I think we ought to keep right on going. And how are we going to develop it? How, what's our development plan? And get it on a schedule, so we know when we think we're going to start getting a rate of return off of it. So I think.
You need to define development plan, define it for.
Yeah, so what, what I see is a, is a little document on the port. It basically lays out this thing in a series of projects, however you want to decide. Project number one is getting the infrastructure in place. And the roads put in. And we think we're going to get it, it's going to cost this, here's a grant, here's what we need to fund, and we think it's going to get done by this date. Second project is probably.
Could you try?
Getting this lined up over here. And, and what are we going to do with it? When do we think we're going to have the pads built? Or how are we going to, what's our development plan for that? And when do we think we're going to get a rate of return off of it, and how much?
How are we going to fund it? Are they going to be seven or eight leases right there, or however many, how are we going to fund it? What are the options?
Exactly. The, the third project, I think, is one of these. There's two more projects, one here and one there. And we ought to be laying out what's our target approach, what do we want to see there? And to get to that answer, maybe it's, we got to go talk to the community. What does a community want to see there? And is it going to require zoning change? And if so, we've got the community behind us. We start negotiating with, with the Twitter to make that happen. But we've got a plan that says in year four, year five, this is developed. I, I think we ought to put together a plan and then hold ourselves accountable for making the plan. And if we see that it's starting to slip, we manage it like a project and try and pull back in.
Well, I like your idea of getting community input instead of us as a court in a silo saying, this is the best and highest use of this land. I think that personally, I think we need to be working with the city, the county, and Parks and Rec to do something. That is community-minded, and we all work together on it. And utilize, you know, we're working with the city, we can maybe utilize transit lodging taxes to help build shoulder season things down there. And, um, I agree that I think that doing a community outreach.
That's critical, because you're, you're going to meet up big opposition about.
About anything.
About commercial down there for sure. We, we've already sort of met that in years past. When we've tried it, when we've even in public talked about making that commercial versus industrial, like industrial. So I think you've got, I think there's your roadblock, and that's, I completely agree. Rallying your community right now is how you get that done. That voice needs to be louder than the downtown district.
Absolutely.
Because they are going to fight this.
Let's propose something here. We have, we have direction on project one. That's. Greg's office is going to be on side of the office, it'll be down that one. At the same time, instead of giving Greg. Greg's office is gonna be on side of the office of the base on that one, at the same time, instead of giving Greg. Develop this as well or get plans together for whatever building there. Let's have a community outreach with that picture in mind. And I don't know if somebody else on staff can maybe spearhead that to take something off your shoulders, but community outreach, call it meetings, surveys, what whatever, um, probably both. What would you like to see there? What does a community need?
On north side one.
Right, cuz this is time critical now, that could be going on at the same time and by the time this. Is in construction, hopefully next year. We also have the results of that that we can start then discussing specifically. What's gonna go there? So we'll have the whole information by the time that we're, you know.
We did that last time, with the water makes, we went out to outreach to city county, we did, we had several county hall meeting and stuff, so it wasn't like this is where you've been.
No.
No, this is something we've done in the past, um, that does change, like Christie did. You know, the city council is different. You know, coming in. But uh, yeah, it's uh, definitely. Time to revisit it.
Cuz that's why I have fair two. Directions right there, one that gets moving on. That which is more prime critical and one that. Also be going at the same time.
Sure, sure, so the next obvious question here is. When do we wanna see revenue coming back off of this realistically?
Well, you're right, that's gonna be a lot.
Yeah, but I I think we need to set a vision for the port. To see if they can't make it happen.
Well, if we have to use the money by next June, which means we better on engineering, but then are we practically speaking doing this construction in twenty four?
I think the next question is your question, it's funny.
Right.
That's where, that's before you.
I it it's both, but you have to, in my mind, you have to be aspirational. Hey, I want, I wanna see, you know, the green area over there with uh commercial products. I wanna see it by twenty twenty five.
Greg, Greg, on this, on this rendering, and I think what the port should probably do is, you know, and I guess the design will. The grant money for the design will help solidify this image. But are we also gonna take into consideration moving the entrance to the event site? Away from its existing location and over to the other side.
Absolutely, it already jogs now, so now it's gonna line up. And am I, am I misunderstanding?
Entrance should.
The entrance moving into second.
Be moved to the west side on second street, not on first, absolutely.
The, and the reason I say that is, it's a, it's a big pinch point for, especially in the summertime. Um. And if we moved it, it would actually create some. Better real estate for the kite schools and more pedestrian access and a little bit safer area. Plus, if we move it, that will allow that festival street and portway to be easily closed off or farmers markets, whatever.
And we're gonna present it as a pedestrian friendly area like that, which is.
One thing that we'll have to bet is the uh, I at the ODOT, I'm sure counts. Because if we start to, if we produce more trip count via retail or commercial function. There's gonna be some necessities that you can no longer, well, the suggestion of part of the study is you can no longer take second street up. It'd be a right down on Riverside, then up and around, so it'd be a redirection around that. Which would kind of negate the ability for us to shut that down as a pedestrian only.
That's part of, that's part of research project number.
Yeah, that incidental trip count number that that figured out.
So it would be a right on the riverside and then.
On the first.
Well, I I guess.
There, so that way you don't have as much congestion according to the way that that document was written.
Okay, but if they did a right on the riverside, they could go back down anchorway and we could still close portway and first. Part of it, it wouldn't close the whole boulevard down, it would only close from anchor.
Which is a good purpose.
Uh huh.
Yeah, and I guess I guess encouraging cars over to first street. It creates pinch points, if just the entrance to the event site is off second, it eliminates a whole lot of problems.
Give some better opportunities, I just don't want that to be forgotten, I want that to be looked at.
Well, and also in that same vein, Christie, you know, the A and E process should consider. The interaction with the event site and also with the hotel property, you know, environment. And so all of those, you know, um. Uh, Ben had really good uh feedback initially on that intersection between Anchorway and Second Street for truck. Traffic because that's how, you know, the juice trucks are gonna be getting in by. Uh, shepherds there and getting out, so you know, there's a lot of stuff that keeps you in there, yeah.
So we're gonna have to move on here in a second, I wanna make sure that this is, that this is clear, we wanna see these two things.
Yeah, but again, I think the plan has to encompass everything that we talked about, including getting commercial going, yep. And and personally, I'd like to see both of those open areas filled in. By twenty twenty nine.
Absolutely.
And that ought to be a goal if we agree. Get it on the schedule and and build your plan to support.
So with the community outreach, if I may ask. What happens if it comes back and they want to be a farmer's market?
They can want whatever they want.
We frame the question in such a way that we use the question, we help to gauge it towards. A commercial retail, because we put it out there as what do you wanna see? I've heard to say that sometimes the best thing for the public is not as good for the municipality because. You know, it doesn't, doesn't serve the financial copper that need to make the engine run.
Why don't you propose that as a, not a. Hey, name anything you want, I mean, we're not name, we're not naming a ship or anything, well, we're thinking. And the development potential down there allows, but would you like to see, or do you think the community needs office buildings? Do you think the community, uh, we better serve by a public meeting space or event space? X, Y, or Z, what do you think the community needs? And get responses there, not just.
Just wanted to make sure it wasn't a wide open poll.
Now, we need to be able to. Get tangible data quickly by aggregating it from a multiple.
I think the big thing is, is endpoint use. Is it light industrial? Or is it something else? And the something else could be a mixture of restaurants and. You know, multi-use facilities and whatever else, yeah. It's, I think the way to frame it is, it's really the last big area that we can develop. And shameless notice, if we don't ask.
Also, the public perception that the port is just loaded and. We have so much money to burn, yeah, um, so I think we just seem to be able to communicate very accurately what our financial status is and. Our development goals are to help the port. Be financially stable. And somehow the the public is totally off.
Yeah. And so we're gonna move on, one thing to note, something Toby mentioned a little bit earlier. No matter what a few commissioners decide to do over the course of the next few years, at least. That you will have a majority of the people sitting here as commissioners for at least the next two and a half years. Take this direction. Because things can change and things will change. So, all right. Everything's clear on that section right now, we're not gonna get to other ones, but I think that's really something that we need to focus on, because other properties. Down on the waterfront, I'll use the maritime as an example, when the time comes, they're already developed a pole, there's utilities there, stormwater is gonna be redone. So that can be another discussion when the time comes, but this is the real.
Greg may want to come back to us on the board and get some more clarity on what we want down there, when he goes up with the media operation.
Absolutely.
Because, and you said that could be a long list, we've gotta narrow that down to the realistic and it also be, you know, positive capital, right, yeah.
Okay.
But I think it also needs to be communicated effectively, uh. It's currently done this, so this is the easiest thing to do if we wanna. Consider something different, that's another.
I don't have difficulty developing something without knowing the end zone.
Yeah.
Anyway, so we have designed. Four to five that we're gonna grow and rezone it, it's definitely gonna develop. But we're not the set goals, we have the room.
Absolutely.
I got inside that, at some point, we're gonna top that bridge, we we cross that bridge, the city told us what we're gonna do, we're overland.
Right, and I'd both go back and give it another try. Let's get the utility then. If I'd be working on it, not letting it.
Well, I also think it will help with urban renewal to show we're working on a project.
All right, we're gonna move to airport. Okay, uh, there's food right behind us. I don't, we're not gonna just, if you want some food, grab it, um, as we're going, just maybe a little, it doesn't need to be a formal stop or after airport, we can stop for a few minutes, whatever people would like. Um, okay, airport development, this, um. We had a meeting on this in a little bit of. It came up in planning, I'd like to know. Where we went after the discussions, um. Six months and a year ago regarding. Uh, T hangars, commercial hangars, sorry, where are we at a potential residential and through the fence, and where are we on all of that that we talked about? For, and then let's get real specific about what we can do and what we wanna see.
So the north hanger, uh, there's our FDI that's just about tightened up from from legal because they didn't have the right FAA guidance. They'll be shopped out on the street, see a private development wants to come through and build a hanger. The meantime, receiving construction costs kind of come down, so we're we're still. Actively seeking if we should be building it ourselves. Uh, that's as far as commercial hangers, uh, the the pads that were ready for that. As far as T hangars, we're in a bit of a holding pattern, although they say that I have another idea that I brought up a second, um. FAA funding is gonna help us put in infrastructure to build out on the east side. Uh, off of the taxiway out there and then we'll be. Positioned to either build T hangars ourselves or we'll be positioned to have developers come in and build them themselves. That funding is not available for twenty twenty four, construction twenty twenty five. What's in conjunction with that is a bipartisan infrastructure law funding has, it gives us a hundred fifty nine thousand. Uh, per year for five years, we have to spend it within those five years. So we'll have just under eight hundred thousand dollars in twenty twenty five to build something on the airport. So we could be building in tandem while the infrastructure is going into place for those new T hangars, we could be building as many. Banks of T hangars as possible. At the same time.
So free, free wire, the T hanger material.
We could, I mean, there's been talks about taking out a loan and and doing it ourselves.
No, I mean that, the cash flow that you're getting. Could we use that cash flow to buy the T hanger kits and just storm?
That's another good question, I don't know that necessarily kits per se, if they're built in, it would seem like the economy is at scale, if you build a bank. You're, you build twelve in a row, it's a lot easier than taking two, seven of them with other two, but. It's worth looking into, I mean, at a hundred and fifty nine per year.
Let's uh, I I I wanna finish where we're at as far as the things I asked about first. Then I have a question that's gonna start that conversation.
Uh, but I had kind of an idea recently, so.
Yeah, I just finished your update on that, I don't wanna talk about future plans yet. Finished your update where we're at on the things we've.
Oh, and then through the fence was the other, uh, the other part of the three part question of.
I remember we talked.
So that is not necessarily something the port can spearhead on a charge, that is something that private landowners, they need to do that, the port can partner with them and say we're all for it. But we have no authority to get zoning change on private land, not on the.
Okay.
Also know that, uh. Uh, FFA does not. Like those through the fence agreements, they would just assume there wasn't a single one of those on our airport. Just so you know that.
Yeah, it's a main question though, which is not. I I don't wanna drill down on too many of the things like that, but.
And just get to that, because that is not what I've been told for the last four years by legal.
Well, they, we have some through fence agreements, um, they're not. The issue that always comes up with the through the fence is, do we put a fence around the entire airport or do we continue to allow it if we have? Four or five through the fence agreements, can't remember four, um. They. I don't know, if if I don't know if it's the commission's goal to completely get rid of through the fence or if it's the commission's goal to um have.
CFO that we couldn't do that. Red kept telling us that we couldn't do it, I could see him, and then you ended a great study on that history of it. And you come back to the meeting and said that we can't deny that.
You can't deny.
Million dollar fence, well. Okay, Jeremy wants to speak to that too, because we, I thought it was day one. I don't like that.
I thought it was a setback issue with our land and where the homes are located.
And also a financial issue, if you get rid of the through the fence, you have to fence it all in. Uh, but I don't know if the commission is talking about developing new access points with through the fence, if that's the idea or if you're saying get rid of the existing one.
I'm trying to get to that point, okay. What do we want the airport to be in the future and the options and the things that come up are? Commercial hanger, do we want staff to pursue that? T hangars as well? Do we want the port to look into paying for this or do we, are we open to partnering with private money for these things? As related through the best agreements? Do we want to see, and I. I I heard a property owner say, sure. Do we want to see if an avenue exists for developing some residential area with more. With hangars essentially and allowing that access. Um, as part of, you know, of course charging plenty for it. Uh, where where do we wanna see growth? Are we open to different funding sources out there? That's the real conversation we need to have specifically, how do we go about buying it, I think, or do we get, that's next. We need to talk person, what do we want staff to move forward?
Can we, can we start at, uh, maybe? An identity? To identify what our airport is? If we're not, we're not gonna be a regional airport, the DOWs got that locked in, they got local runways. Yeah, I guess, so we're not gonna ever be that, and I think in the past, we tried to compete with the DOW. And had a full commission that was convinced by Tac Arrow was talking to us and telling us that this is what we need to do, we're gonna be for the fire and. Rescue on the mountain, that's, we need to do this and. As a pilot, we're talking three minutes to the DOWs that, however, it's not gonna be that big of an issue that they're gonna go to the DOW for fire protection and rescue. So we need to identify what we want our airport to be first, I think, personally. And then all these things fall in place.
So let me give you my, yeah. If we've got a three and a half million dollar deficit right now. Where's our opportunity is to really offset that deficit? To me, one of the major ones is the airport. Of the property that we've got. In my mind, I think we have to set a goal. I'll throw one out. In three or four years from now, that airport is cost or revenue. Positive by the tune of a million bucks per year. Now, what would we have to do at the airport? To make it revenue positive by a million bucks in X number of years, is it even possible?
Well, from my experience flying around a little off this summer and everybody's struggling. Every small G A, land strip is struggling, far as trying to reinvent that world of that that will, how. In the past, it's all been just raised a lease and it'll be revenue neutral, we'd stand by, but every airport struggling, I'm curious. Do you have an idea of ours?
I I think we. I think it's, it's a combination of T hangars, I think it's a combination of attracting commercial. Facilities out there, uh, maybe light industry, uh, something to do with the grounds out there, we've gotta get more development on that property. Okay, and bring or, or we decide, hey, it's not, it's never gonna be a revenue producer. Maybe we need to get rid of it. Give it back to the county.
Well, any revenue producing success goes back to today at the port, so it doesn't really need to have a huge cash flow, right, that needs to fund itself.
But. If you wanna continue to develop the airport, you have to have enough revenues frame to. To attract grants and be able to pay your way through the grant, so. I think it's a disaster if you, if you just make it break even.
Well, and if that revenue needs to stay there, I agree, you can't spend the money on it for as quickly as possible, if that revenue has to stay at the airport, maybe we have. Our list of. It sounds like twenty five would be the time to build T hangars. Maybe maybe if we're open to partnering with some private money as well, commercial hanger becomes first. We know T hangars are maybe a year or two later, we can start on that, there's private, there's gonna be money there too. And if we choose to lease that out, maybe we start using those revenues, because I agree. A lot of industrial development, maybe that in time can be funded by the extra revenue that are generated. By the initial projects.
But if we see that we just, it's not gonna work. Then why keep logging the dead horse?
But that's what we need to know, if we're open to these things, if we're open to, if we wanna see them, if we're open to. Different revenue streams to make it happen. Tell, they can tell us, what can we build next year? And how would we have to do it? Where's this money in twenty five? Get that money stayed, hey, there's an idea what we can fund in twenty eight or twenty nine. Get some new businesses out there.
Yeah, so I think we're saying the same thing, we need a a plan that's multi-year, that starts generating. Revenue that could be used for further development. But we got to look at it this way, not just this way. You got to look at it this way.
But a lot of those grants from the FAA aren't they, you pay a certain percentage and they. Well, then that revenue. So maybe this airport starts having a pot of money fifteen years in a row and you start, then you're able to provide that ten a little bit more frequently without a lot of stress and. Fund or partially fund the other developments down the road.
Don't know if we visit AD zoning and make sure what we're talking about, we might achieve.
Well, if it's aviation-related industry, then it is theoretically, it's out of that umbrella. So you couldn't just put a a widget manufacturer out there on the airport and call it, it has to be aviation-related, so.
But but let's say it's a aviation-related and we we get. Hundred thousand dollars in your rent, lease cost. Does it have to stay at the airport?
Yep, that that money that's generated because due to FAA assurance.
Now, the only reason why we're getting away with it right now is. It's got this big sucking sound, we're actually dumping money into the airport instead of pulling money out of the airport.
It's the unique investment we have, our portfolio is that, we're limited. We're obligated to fund it and make it work, but we're not eligible to get revenue from.
It sounds like a problem. How do we fix that?
Well, we're probably down that road too far to fix it the way you want it. Is that a true statement?
I I think. Looking at it like a resource to subsidize other asset centers is. Not necessarily going to be viable, and we can look at it as as a value to the community in and of itself and getting it solvent, getting it to a point where it is able to survive on its own without being subsidized by other assets. But thinking that 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 Peter's going to pay Paul, I think that that is, it's difficult to undertake because the FAA assurance.
Great. Are there any restrictions on the amount of cash reserves that an airport can have?
Interesting.
Yeah, but I mean, we. Just so that you're funding your own depreciation, you know that you've got the airport is fully functioning at the hundred percent. Then granted, the ninety percent grants in a way pay for depreciation. You know, so they're making it really easy for you to fund depreciation. Yeah, but if you can start. I don't, I just don't know if there's limits on the amount of cash the airport can stockpile for future units.
So it's an interesting conversation, that's so much to do with. Filling in three point five million dollars, it has to do with, if we believe this is an asset community. If we believe that it's bringing money, people. Interested in our region in, and we can make a plan to make it self-sufficient and. Almost have a little bit of a trust fund out there for future development, depending on the market demands, do we want to do that?
Yeah, but this this investment you're fair to the first one, just talk about lot one, so to that. This is a totally different animal, I mean, we're never even achieved and not have full control if they had a lot of one. Because they got fed money in this. Okay, so why why wouldn't we want to give them back to the county? Why don't we? First of all, I think, to be honest with you, I think it's going to be a lot of work for us, I think personally as a pilot, unbiased, but. I think it's an asset that we can utilize and we haven't really marketed it well.
Right.
And I think, you know, one of the things I want to talk about the day two is, I think, you know. I had dinner with a pilot in Alaska and, you know, they had never even heard of courtesy cars in Alaska. You know, and I think one of the biggest links that we're missing is courtesy car.
It's transportation.
It's transportation from point A to point B, point B being downtown or winery or whatever, and. You know, this summer I flew to airport on the coast and they allow twenty-four hour car courtesy. And the only reason I flew there was because I had that car for twenty-four hours, most times two hours or four hours. And that's an old way of thinking, it's it's old concept that. The guy flies in, he has a two hundred dollar hamburger, 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 explains the leaves, well, you know, we went down there Friday afternoon, played a round of golf. Dinner, breakfast, golf, we spent five hundred bucks because of that car. If the car was dirty, we would have done it. And so my my theory is that. And I spoke with another hotel manager here and he said he's all for this part of supporting, maybe sponsoring cars, and my theory is that if we can market. We'll get revenue from the dual bill, which we're not doing right now, we probably should, I went up to, that's going to start up. But we can, we can market our wineries and our brew pubs, but I don't want to be associated with. Our airport and alcohol unless there's a car that they can be overnight somewhere. You know, an eight-hour separation from bottle to throttle, I don't want to market unless we have that, so my theory is we have three or four cars. And at first, they have four cars, the first three cars are twenty-four hour rental. And they go on a website, they reserve it on a credit card, we know all about their history, their airplane's on the tarmac, and then the last car is two hours. Okay, so now. A pilot, a lot of pilots' wives don't really want to fly a lot, but they can go shopping, and they can go wine tasting, and they go to downtown. It makes the trip to Hood River much more desirable. And so now you have a wife who wants to go to the river, and. If we can get cars that are sponsored by the lodging establishments. That we're not out in a zipper umbrella for insurance. Now you go online and you know you and your wife to get there, you've got a car, not even go wine tasting. For eight hours, spend the night in hotel, get back in aircraft. Alcohol is not an issue, we can do all that.
Well, and also, I know. We have a friend that owns a wine bike tour. And this last summer, she had more people fly in. Than ever before, and she organized it with the hotels and shuttle and. You know, so there's there's also shuttles that we could partner with or allow use of if they wanted to market. More, it's just that no one's been told that they can.
If we, if we think this just a little bit bigger, okay? I like your idea about tourism and and improving the the airport that way, there's another opportunity down there on the. On the river and that's the cruise ships, and we are way underutilizing that. It may mean that we have to put some capital down there, or we've got indications that the cruise ships will partner with us to build a little nicer facility down there. But I I think we're. Underutilizing that tourist group, they come right onto a bus and they go up to the mountain, then they come right back and get off the bus and get on their.
Take off the land.
Yeah, it's like, let's stay with the airport.
So, you know, and we, I like to market land and state, you know, so you land in America and you stay where I land, stay in Haiti.
Yeah.
You know, but we need to have that car, that's an intricate part.
Things want on first street.
So are we okay? So we have this facility that I think we can agree. Provides the benefits to the community and can provide even more business development, which is kind of what we're supposed to do, to the community. We make it into what you're saying, I agree with you, we probably. It doesn't sound like from from as a port, our need to recapture revenue, dumping port money into the airport. And it doesn't sound like the best investment because it had whatever is made there has to stay, so. Are we okay with private money out there to assist in that?
Well, maybe rest that too, I was down at the open coast and I went and talked to the guys and they have this. True situation, they have a hanger that prominent businessman in town built, had an aircraft. Land leased it, and now his life has changed and he's not flying them over, the hanger's sitting there vacant. And the community is upset because there's a good aircraft in it, but it's prominent. So my, I've always preached this, and Jerry about it, that, you know. When you give up that land, you lose a lot of control there, and we see a lot of legal fees fighting things, you know, so really think about. Doing in-house, because then you have, I don't want to use the word control, but I will, you manage and control your asset much more, you can make a decision. The best bits community, not just a handful of people. You know, there's example. Up in the Puget Sound area, I golf, and there is a golf course that they have a stay and play package, and. The tax dollars from the hotel revenue. The pro with the course went and talked to city council, city council said, you know what, we will pay for those rounds of golf through our taxes for the hotel. For tourism. So now you go up there and you stay in play, you basically stay for free, you buy a hotel room and you golf for free and subsidized by the city. What are the, you land here and you got, you got taxed, you have a land and stay package and your your hotel is virtually free. Because of the taxes that they are half price, it's an incentive to get people in there.
Well, and also. It breaks up the noise too, because now you have people instead of their landing and they're taking off on the same day, they're landing and they're taking off two days later.
Exactly.
How do we get, how do we get, how do we get to revenue neutral? I mean, I agree, but how do we get to revenue?
Yeah, I don't think we should look at this from a standpoint of being profitable, I think we've got to change our hats and look at it, how we can make this a public. Productive asset for community and let it trickle down.
Well, since the money has to stay there, it needs to pay for itself.
Exactly.
But we need to think of it, your example, there is a benefit to the community, not something that's going to start filling our coffers. Correct, right, somewhere else, that's not what's going to happen, but.
Significant effort, because I think from the budget, I want to say that it was minus eight hundred thousand, it was a big.
And that's where we're at eighty before capital outlay.
Eighty, eighty thousand, so we're actually. I just added an extra zero.
So they've shown something like a couple hundred thousand dollars, so what are the projects that we need to do in the next couple of years? And to generate a couple hundred thousand dollar revenue into the airport? So how many tea hangers would you have to do? How many commercial hangers would you have to do? What what is the deficit after that? That we're that we're still short? But we set the goal, two hundred thousand.
But we can't be dropping millions of dollars, we're getting there.
Before we're on that and looking at construction costs at this moment and projecting what your your revenue is coming back, we we did that with a commercial hanger. Couple months ago, it showed that it wasn't going to be a good radar return until year eighteen or nineteen.
Right, but that was solely with us paying for it, right?
That's correct, and and so there's there's a lot of misnomers in that and. How you, how do you hash that that play, I mean, we can have a game plan and then when the. When the the construction market is right, that's when we target it and then go after those projects, but if it's not conducive to a good rate of return. We're just kind of sitting there saying, well, this would be great in year twenty-six, but.
Yeah, great, but what I'm saying is, we got to take some action, we got to be looking forward, we can't just sit back and.
So the.
Hope everything will be okay, because it's not.
The North April was just recently finished and that was pre-COVID, COVID took the the steam out of everything. Now we looked at how are we going to build a commercial hanger? Funded by the port, found that the rate of return wasn't going to be beneficial, now we're looking at shopping in private industry. We also have tea hangers on the back ends and we're waiting for our opportunity to get that funding. Also looking at other areas where we might do info projects. Things are are moving, there's this concept that nothing happened at the airport, but if you look back in the past five, six years, there's been mistakes and sample projects. It just was hit with COVID, so now there's this concept that we're at a standstill, it has been like this, and it it will continue to be like that, we just need to be specifically. Strategic on when we deploy our capital asset. I'm I'm right there with you, but it's hard to gauge that, it's hard to say when is going to be the best time because. Construction prices have been going like this.
And it's always going to be that way, so we're going to have to make the best judgment and go.
Yeah, and then there's going to be some tough decisions, but I don't disagree.
But the goal is to make up that three million. Why isn't part of the conversation you're having here, talking about selling the airport and investing that money in? In things that actually make us money? I'm just being, I'm just talking about, you know, thinking outside the box, you know, but but I think you got to think about all of those angles.
At least upon if it's eighty thousand, if it's at least operationally getting pretty darn close to break even at eighty thousand. And the feds are paying for ninety percent of the depreciation. It's actually, it might be one of our closer. Units.
One out of the box. Idea, not just for the airport, but maybe across all of our, it sounds to me like. From the courtesy car idea, the cruise ship's idea. This commission might be interested in exploring a program of public-private partnerships or concessions at port properties. How can we increase the business activity without a brick and mortar investment? But with, you know, time and talent and relationship investment to encourage, you have concessions on that event site that make that whole thing. A completely different thing than what the port owns, the property of the event site becomes a totally different thing when the concessions start up. Do you want us to maybe put together a program to do some outreach for private concession ideas? At the airport, at the cruise ship, to make things happen that are not a brick and mortar thing, but are like a business partnership? I think so.
I I do too. I think you got to break the last.
Like a micro, you know, a set of business relationships.
And and the cruise ship is an interesting, I think the answer is yes, you need to, but the cruise ship, you know, last time they came, hey, we want to build a dock.
Yeah.
Remember that? They presented this, oh, we're going to, we want to build this, that, well, it was awful, it took away. Have a mile of recreations.
Yeah.
We're not going to do that, but there might be some ideas that we can, but there are inside ideas that other communities are sitting in down.
Down towards Portland, there's one of them that. The cruise line partnered with Ford. And they built a very simple dock out into the river, and it it's not up to, it's a bit, it's very small. But allows them access much better than what we've got now, this one's. It's kind of bad.
Jerry, do we have the right under O R S seven seven seven, can we use private money and guarantee with or asset? Say.
You can't be in business with a private business as a partner or in any other way. You have to structure relationships with private business to have a, you know, a separation between the two.
So great, good command, he's a multimillionaire, comes in and says, I'll loan the port three million dollars at three percent. We guarantee assets. We can't do that on the private side.
Well, let me ask this slightly different. How could we do that? How would you have instruction this thing that we could take advantage of that?
Because that'd be like a bond for somebody who's a, you know, a long-term investor.
Well, first of all, now you're talking too about loans and you're talking about public finance and restrictions on. You know, what the port can do with regard to borrowing, and I'm not sure that it would be permissible to borrow from a. You know, a wealthy person, that that would be a permissible borrowing structure. So, you know, it depends, I guess, if you're going to frame a question on what the facts are. To determine what the possible outcomes would be.
So that's something you want to look at, maybe have a legal counsel look at and see if. The O R S seven seven seven, we can go out and get private money and use collateral of the port. To get it at a low percent, it can guarantee ten-year window of payment.
You're talking about using, instead of a P three type arrangement, essentially borrowing.
Just private money that a low percent can guarantee, I mean, for somebody who just wants a thirty percent longer return on investment, guaranteed.
Right.
It's a good, it's a good thing.
Well, I've seen several of McMinim's restaurants have done that recently, their developments, they went out and still feeling that we're selling portions of our next development at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we guarantee you X percent on this date.
Yep.
And and that's how they have, you know, act. Actually got the capital for their redevelopment, none of you.
And now we did great, a number, we're going to get a debt service of three percent. You know, the debt services is the hard number, you can do it for former, it's even going to have to for us to do.
I think what we need to know is what can we do, what's what are the available options, especially for the airport, because it's so different with, I mean. What, what is? There are always enough there, so what can we do?
Well, I would frame it a little tighter than that. Here's what we want to do, here's our goal, what we're trying to do. How do we do it? How can we package this and make it legal?
Because it seems like when we just can't give an answer right now, go build this with this key.
Okay. So just the airport, I'm hearing, I'm hearing tea hangers in twenty-five.
It sounds like that's the time to do it, but let's make sure we're ready to do it after that money they're forgetting.
In-house capital or partnership or private total?
That's, well, the FAA is going to, through the regular C I P program, they're going to fund the infrastructure, but then the the B I L, bipartisan infrastructure law. It it is another resource of money that will have just shy of eight hundred thousand dollars capital to throw at, so it'll still be initial investment.
And we have to use that each year, they give it, we have to use it.
Five-year window to use it, so we can let it accumulate, and then in year five, we'll have seven hundred and change, or we could use a hundred and ninety each year.
So this asset's really not going to help us with a bigger port problem.
That's correct.
It's a secondary issue that. We want to have an airport, here's what we can do to support that.
It it will help the revenue stream because we'll be able to build tea hangers.
Yeah, but it stays on the airport, but it doesn't solve.
But if it's something we can argue, well, this is an asset of community, then there's an easy argument, like, both be revenue neutral with this.
Yeah.
And move forward with.
If you want to sell, either to sell it in revenue neutral. If you wanna sell, either to sell it or revenue neutral.
Kevin's suggestion for stock volume revenue, which is the best way we can do that.
But that only helps the airport.
I also would like to see if we're gonna work on tourism and making it nice for people to stay and play. Um, the FBO idea of having the two-story FBO building with the restaurant and concessions and stuff.
Still don't.
That no deeper. That's not a bad idea, airport lodging.
Okay.
It's huge.
Look into it.
That would be allowed for zoning?
That's how I'll check, I'm gonna say vacation, if you're ready to just blow in.
Well, how about your idea about utilizing your zones?
Yeah, that's, that's another thing too, you know, we, as a utility provider, we just put a bunch of solar arrays out there and we start to take over from P P and L.
So, Jerry, I would want a question for, for Jerry on the housing, so if, if there was, uh. Short-term rentals at the airport for people coming flying in. Is that an airport function of seven seven seven?
Well, I mean, who owns the housing? It's Portland. Well, and that goes to the question, actually, uh, you know, that you've raised about the port getting in the business of. Uh, you know, residential ownership and renting, and I think the answer is the same, that it's. A, a stretch, I'm not sure the port really is in the, uh, uh, residential construction. If there was a, if there was a separate third party possibly, that's a private party, there might be an arrangement with a lease.
Passion.
And there may be a situation where they need to waste some land or like something like that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Would the, like, yurts or, uh, that type of thing, I guess, like, uh, R V parks, a lot of ports have R V parks. And they're paying room tax, but I know some, maybe they're not supposed to have people stay there for more than thirty days. But I'm wondering if the port could have.
The two things you have to look at are first FAA requirements, uh, and allowances.
Yeah.
And the other would be the county, uh, airport overlay zone requirements. Those would be the first things, and then after that, you could start thinking about, well, what could we do with a private party and, uh, structures?
But what I'm saying is, assuming that those, uh, examples with that they and the county are good. Could the port then do yurts on a, own the yurts and rent the yurts on a short-term basis like an R V park?
I, I, I think it's questionable, and so.
Really, I, can that involve in the same categories in R V park?
But in the R V park, we only own the land and are renting the land, whereas this would be a structure.
That's correct.
Yeah, so you'd have to almost lease the land out to someone else, but then do it.
I wanna put that envelope, guys, gray area, keep it gray. As far as.
But it's also a temporary structure, so then.
Well, how do we on R V park, how do you build a restaurant, a structure? It's not temporary, I think it's approved by port property.
People don't live in it.
You better take them a letter.
Alright, so.
So looking at the concession though, is that, is that something for the list?
Look at all this.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, um, alright, let's take a break, get some food, use the restroom, we've got time. Lower mill, which might be a little bit reverb, uh, Greg can give us kind of up there where we're at. And then make the real decision, if any, the directions they will be. We want to sell, we want to use this, we wanted to look at developing, we pulled some, some, uh, direction there, but.
So it's, it's difficult to have the metrics to make any decisions or give any strong guidance because we're still waiting for, uh, as. You guys all know in our last budget, we appropriate a certain amount so we can have a, a market study. So that way we could make sure that whatever we need to do will know the actual value. Um, of, of the parcels, but it would also give us an indication on just a, a kind of a social. The dynamic of what type of function should go there. Previous concept was a, uh, full build out of a light industrial complex, the tied-out density. We've got some other entities that would like to purchase and or long-term ground these, and so it's really more just to get a range. How we feel, we, we still, uh, correct if I'm wrong, whether we thought of selling free or two and retaining two. Um, is that still a concept or should we pull our cards close into our, our hearts and wait till we can build? There's, there's some, some kind of, um. Possible partnerships with some building material manufacturers, one of which is there already that. We might be able to acquire concrete to, uh, close to proximity, if we really wanna do our own construction. So there's some, some ways we could work forward, but again. It, it, I do feel like a disadvantage, I mean a disadvantage because I don't have the results of that study to give better metrics on what value is. How much we can stand to, to return. Uh, we've spent quite a bit, we've spent almost five dollars and forty cents per square foot so far, all in on. Acquisition and improvements, so it's a. It's something that we, we wanna be strategic for what we do, like as parcels.
Yeah, what we're just saying is we cannot have a M L CFO. Those questions are driven by the, by numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's makes it your job a lot more difficult right now. You don't have that daily one-on-one conversation, CFO and talk about, are we gonna invest them or, you know, what we need? And with the debt load there, we don't have that, but you, you stay in contact with Fred at all. You're kind of doing yourself with Kevin.
Yeah, it, there hasn't been much, uh, that I've been leaning on Fred, kept it in that aspect, I think he has his focus on this. And so he's, he's not really digging through the, the details on, on where we need as far as strategic financing.
Do you think you have the tools you needed to bring this to us, or do you need more, more resources?
No, and that's where, you know, I, I would talk about it now, but I, I feel like it's a little bit ahead of, uh, documented. We talked about that, I think it could be that market analysis, market rate study, give us more of an engagement, where, where we're at. Are, are, could we, could we stand up to, to get a good return? Um, we know what we're all in on, and so looking at what's, the very few comps that are in the area. It's hard to see us getting, uh, a, a good return to just about it. Parting it into my personal opinion, but I feel like, you know, having a, a, a larger scope study. From, um, a planning firm or, you know, a market company. Would really assist with us, make the decision with the staff, make an analysis and.
I G collapsed, it's up there, they bought that property?
They don't lease it from us.
Not yet, they only.
It almost seems to me is that we're trying to generate a bunch of revenue, we either. Kind of develop something relatively big in there and attract a major like I pass into it. Or if we're going for the little mom and pop, you're not gonna get a lot of money. That's one decision, who's our market in that? And I've got probably, uh. More global question. And I don't know if we got the information to be able to answer. Are we really effective at land development? Has land developers, is that our sweet spot? Or should we be in that business? And I don't know the answer to that. But we spend a lot of money in developing land. We have.
Yeah.
Should we continue to do that or should we?
The past twenty-year decisions have always been revenue generated in the bridge, we've never really had maybe that. And this is a whole different story for us, is that we don't have that, right, we don't have it. And so if our return is only two percent or less, return, it's for the community.
Yeah.
That mindset's gotta go away. And so it's a whole, whole new venture. But I'm not sure you had that question about in the past.
Yeah, yeah, but I, I mean, we used to be. Are we really good at land development or is there a better model?
Well, in my words, well, thought, considering that we have to go on prevailing wage. And we just have to do other things as a public agency, it automatically makes us very expensive developers.
But I think my head off the John man part is, you know, some of the things that he's done, Laura Hammel in-house.
Well, yeah.
We gotta be more creative, I think, kudos to John, and I think there's more that we can do in-house. Maybe our staff does grow, but we do need more in-house.
You know, one, one area that would be beneficial is, you know, to start getting information coming back and then start to come up with a game plan is. That's the, the previous concept of multiple flex space, you know, multiple buildings, but they would be flex space. So you support a smaller business, they could grow into a bigger business, that's been a, uh, methodology for the border, the mission statement, if you will. Um, do we feel like we are beholden to that or do we look for a larger entity? I mean, John and I were out there the other day and we thought about, what about self-storage? Something that's, it's, it benefits the community, but it doesn't create jobs, it, it creates, uh, an asset in a sense that people need to store. Items is something that's the way you use land. It's that paradigm shift of, of where the port used to operate from and how do the commissions feel about moving forward with those? Those missions.
A great, great comparison, reality.
Well, the challenge that we have, of course, is that there's already a, a series of those units. Right around the corner.
And also too, I think Jerry will go through, you know, if there's a balancing act or a ton of times. Probably agree with the price like it should have, and there's a tough one there, you know, we did maybe some federal funding that they wouldn't be eligible to. Uh, we ran across that with. This is part of my long, I think there's some complaints about that, and I understand, you know. It's a fine line.
The storage idea, I'm thinking along the lines of those R Vs.
Oh my gosh.
That kind of development, we don't have the, we've seen studies, we don't have the ability right now to start building commercial hair. We've seen studies and we, even on the proposed warehouse we saw about a year ago out there, it was an incredibly high price. Um, for us to just build it, someone that's a lit covered, not enclosed. Advanced storage yard for boats, RVs and things like that, that's what is, doesn't happen. That's something I think we can look into and maybe have a better chance of building ourselves and realizing all of the lease revenue off of that. Relatively minimal cost compared to other developments now. I mean, I drove by a couple in candy, I think, we just drove by, it was very simple, it was covered, but it was lit, it was fenced in, that's it.
That was it, drove by one yesterday, went back to Arizona, they had solar accounts, each one of them, there was no power in the ground. It was each unit have a tree. Only individual.
If we do something like that at the airport.
Yeah, but then the revenue has to stay at the airport, I'm trying to find revenue stream.
That's true.
You're right, but maybe.
Yeah, everybody else has a bunch of bridges and sort of.
Right, or else you're jamming into the background, it's limited space for that, so. I'll just.
I think your turnover would, you'd fill them immediately, for one of the things we could do as a port right now. And one, show that we're serving the community, and two, giving us a profit center right away.
Oh, yeah.
Those storage centers are it, those are low investments with high profit.
I'll take two spots.
Location, I mean, that's a lot more than we need. Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Out of the way, use, use one of the four lots there, or two, who knows, what's the domain? Let's find out.
Isn't there that strip up there that's not really buildable?
Weird.
But for individual folks to go in and online.
Yeah, I mean, that's what John and I were up there, we're actually thinking about the self-storage, it's a roll-up doors, but they're. Nine oh two, which is the lot that John and his team have recently completed, uh, collecting. Relocation, there's still a little more projects, uh, there, but maybe we can do a lot line adjustment or a partition, or just a minor partition. And that way you come up with a whole stack, we can have storage for boats with some of the minor storage and maybe not just. Buildings, you know, concrete buildings.
Well, let's do it, but you wanna do it right, we don't wanna just be like, oh, here's a fence and some gravel, chuck it in there, a little spray paint, it's not a proper. Spot, but it doesn't, I think, we, I'm talking about five, ten million large buildings.
It's, it's more just, it gets away from job density, you know, and it is, is the staff have the. You know, the, the blessing to look into it, knowing that we're not gonna create multiple jobs from this, but we are gonna create a value for the community.
I, I would, I would add one other one to look at, and I haven't touched it, I haven't looked at, but I think you ought to go talk to I G. And see what is their five, ten-year plan, I mean, they've expanded once. They're kind of. Now, granted, there's a couple of properties between them, but it may make sense for them to. Expand into that area that we just finished. It's a major employer, takes off a whole bunch of boxes. We can either, uh, probably have to sell the land to them. Uh, and maybe that's okay.
Yeah.
Looks like you can take that money and go buy someplace else or.
No reason not to look at that too.
So, yeah, eleven point three before it is.
Yeah, okay. So, but I guess to answer the question. If something like a storage facility or a sale or something like that does, are we open to? Yeah, I mean, we might be creating thousands of jobs, might be creating more than one or two, but are we okay with it if it solves? Our stated revenue goal?
Yeah.
To go down. Yeah, I think the mindset is old school, we don't worry about job creation, that's the main, what it used to be, is our main job, we. Great job, but we've gotta get off that mindset, you know, and I think we can defend that.
And I think the other thing that we gotta keep in mind is, we're not looking at ten years out, we're looking at a couple of years out.
Initial capital investment minimal, and the removal cost, which is minimal, that's, that's a huge. So anything come in here, they don't have to pay for demolishing the building that they have to pay top, top capital dollar for.
So what do you think about that?
I like that.
So what you're thinking is maybe we build a storage center, and let's say I achieve five years, but it wants to expand.
Cost of these, this is our new park in the summertime.
So we're gonna wait for the study to come out, you know, that's something we just can't decide yet, but there are a few things now to look into. Uh, as potential short-term, that maybe some short-term revenue.
We go back there for a little bit. Um, in regard to where are we gonna start building revenue?
So, yeah, the, uh, the three-phase versus single-phase issue is kind of something I've been trying to hammer out because, uh. Three-phase transformer wouldn't put it in, in time of construction, the single-phase for temporary. Uh, wasn't it until the, the unit showed up and then realized we needed to create a three-phase? So I've been working with P P and L, in fact, I got a meeting out there with them tomorrow and, uh, Taphany. To figure out, because there's a bunch of stubs and sweeps that were supposed to be there, and so. Long story short, it's, it's still coming, but it's not, uh, it's not in the ground, the, the bulk of three-phase transformer is not in the ground yet.
My question is though, we are selling fuel this time, why are we getting revenue?
So, from my understanding, the N L U, uh, the agreement was on the new fuel. The old fuel tank did not include a flowage fee, there are flowage.
Can we double check that and sure that?
Yeah.
Are you sure that this was realized?
Okay, and so that's the secondary question to that, and it's my understanding that we get a nickel gallon? Or is it a percentage per gallon?
It's a percentage.
Are you sure?
No, it's a bit, I wanna say it's, well, no, you're right, it is, it's a, uh, actual number, but it's not a nickel per gallon, but it is, uh. There's a threshold that every thousand gallons, it's this much, everything above that, it jumps up a cent or a point tenth of a cent. Um, to be confirmed, but it, uh, it's not a point, I remember looking at it and thinking it's not a nickel a gallon.
Well, what I, what I remember. Was that we're not cocking names, but. Was that we're not talking names, but this is peanut money. Now, is that fair? I mean, I know that's what we signed the contract for, but in today's world, is that a fair deal? Or should we try and renegotiate?
I think, uh, we need to look at, once this project is complete, because it still sounds like there's. Going to be some more expenditures to get the rights, uh, infrastructure in place to get it up and running. Looking what the total cost is after, from the quarter, besides the FA grants or the, I think there's a connect six grant that helped us on this one. To look at that and then look at how long that, that return is going to take from the flowage fees, because. We're out of sight, out of mind, we don't have to touch it, we don't have to do anything. And so there's, there's kind of a management fee. From the FBO's perspective of they're buying the gas, they're tracking it, they're selling it. We just need to look at when we actually hit cash positive and we paid ourselves back.
I would suggest that we have that discussion sooner than later. I think you can project now what the picture looks like, and I think we ought to have that discussion. Now, and if it's. If it's what I think it's going to say, we need to try and do something about it now, not wait. But I could be wrong. Remember, we're looking for everything right now. I'm, I'm real concerned.
What? Yeah, and I mean, it gets into the weeds with regard to the negotiation from it, but are we willing to man it ourselves if they want to walk away?
I think I've got to see what the numbers are first.
Yeah. I mean, with, without having a cap number to, to bounce it off against, it's kind of hard. We can guess today.
If they're not going to be that far off.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's, uh, it's worth looking into. I think it'd be worth just looking at the length of the agreement because it. It's a three-year agreement, we're a year and one and a half. We really need to negotiate now or to wait for it to, to re-up the term. But I don't want.
Maybe it's time to renegotiate it because it hasn't even started really yet.
I think that if I'm remembering right, the, um, flowage case is part of the FBO agreement. So the FBO, the, um, tech era or. Their, um, their responsibility as FBO. It has a provision in it that says that they're, they're going to manage the fuel fees. And then I think that the actual. Current agreement says that there will be a negotiation once the new fuel system is installed and running. That the port, port will enter into an agreement about, that's what my recollection is.
Well, if that's the case, it's time now to be thinking about it.
I want to say, Fred, hammer that out before you, but yeah, that's worth looking into because it was an amendment already to that agreement, which I thought was. That, that rate, that agree point rate.
The fuel, the flowage.
Yeah.
I think we discussed the terms, but I don't know that it's been more.
Sure. Um, we have a little bit of extra time, certainly don't have to use it, everybody's got a busy day. Are there any other items? On these areas that anybody would like to bring up or that we didn't cover, you know, show? No, I don't, we, no, is, is it something you need direction on?
Well, can I just jump in here? So just, I'll give you my vision for what's going to be transpiring from today's meeting. And so, um, so I'd like to take the, in the 15, uh, projects that you've identified to do. Uh, staff will, for the next week, we'll, uh, kind of run them through some criteria. Uh, we also have some, uh, staff centered issues for the budget such as, uh. Other maintenance projects, um, improvements to buildings, to keeping roofs. Uh, working vehicles, those types of things that aren't as interesting. So my plan is at the December meeting, we would bring. Your 15 projects back and show you how we scored them and see how they rank. And then we'll also show you what staff is seeing as far as those other capital projects that we feel need to be considered in the budget. And then at that point, we'll bring that to you at the December meeting, you can pull and ask questions. You know, uh, poke holes in the criteria, on the assumptions. And then assuming that we come out of that meeting with a document that we can work with, then that'll help the new finance director in establishing the budget.
Is there anything by staff you want to talk about? Is that a fair question?
I was overdoing it.
Yeah, is that any issues that you like to talk about or things we haven't addressed or?
Bridge Village or Marine Village.
I don't know anything about that. Uh, we know what the bridge requires, but.
But if we can start to work on a long-range plan that could accommodate that, so you guys have to say, I just have a simple graphic in mind.
Sure, we were, little backs, right? We were just talking, we could go and, once the bridge is done, we have, we're now the Marina Green is. Say that the green entrance seem to be relocating, say that we need to make some changes down there. What do you want to do with all that commercial space? We want to have an area that is, have some commercial properties, some calling. And go from there.
And just, and just throw in a potential future office. I mean, I think there needs to be a discussion also about where the current port administration office goes.
And so this is just kind of a preliminary, I, conversation that Greg and I had and like, well, something, you're going to want to do something with that once the bridge is done. Because people are going to be peeling right off of there. Do we want it to just stay, you know, a green space or are we discussing maybe putting some green space somewhere else and we want to use that commercial area? Which, you know, Marina Green's not commercial, but all the, what's that parking lot is.
And this assumes that the new. Yeah.
Moving bridge over, uh, right on top of the port offices, but yes, the concept is. Uh, theoretically, how could we incrementally infill and, you know, take down the chamber, take down the DMV eventually. Uh, but the DMV parking lot, there's adequate space for another structure to go there now. I, I don't know why that sacred land or not, but the thought was to, to discuss it. But then perhaps in the, it's just shown as basic, you know, rectangles, but. Uh, there's green space in between those two structures we just talked about. We can build a structure there. Demolish one or the other, we offset the individuals with the tenants that are in those spaces into the new structure while we build next to it. Cycle back over and you play a game of hopscotch where then you get three buildings in a row. That, then you can come around the corner, by that time, uh, the bridge should be built. And the, uh, uh, the Marina can, we can start to look at how to develop that into a nice row of retail and restaurant space.
Are you a commercial?
It is, yeah.
It couldn't be better. Then you mentioned about, you know. We're talking about lot one and it just may be a good time to barter, justify developing that property, but we're not going to lose to green space. But maybe we go, hey, so we need to have that dialogue.
So one, one thing you need to remember, uh, is that there was an initiative petition that was passed, uh, in, you know, the district. That restricts development by the port, uh, in the green space there, uh, leading all the way to and through and past. The, uh, what was the, uh, Chamber of Commerce building? Uh, the, the nice thing about it from the port's perspective is that, um, it was passed in the form of a port ordinance. Uh, and, uh, so the port, I think, could probably either amend or repeal that ordinance. Uh, but just to be aware of the fact that's out there.
What year was that?
A long time ago.
Sacrifice.
It's an initiative.
Yeah. But if that was all, I mean, we're probably not going to be getting into the hotel thing about it, but the, you know, restaurant space, office space. Boardwalk going all the way around there because it's, it seems like at least, uh, you know. Chance that that Marina launch is going to have to be somewhere else.
Let me talk to you because we, we've been talking with contractors the last couple of days and we got some more this afternoon. A new bridge comes out here, there is some talk, you know, that we're going to need this area down here for staging and lay down. Possibly even using a bridge launcher to launch segments of the bridge out this way to keep it out of the water. That's one, one aspect. So all of this, concern that I've got is you've got civilians coming in here. We got to close this off for safety purposes, nothing else.
Right.
Which means they're going to come around here and go over here. And I think we're going to have to figure out how to move this guy over here someplace.
Seems logical if it's illegal.
We got to work all of that out, but I, I really like this idea. This is another project. In two stages, stage one is this. And we can be doing that while the bridge is being built. Stage two is recovery of this and what do you want to make of this after the bridge? Personally, I'd love to see a couple of nice restaurants out here with beautiful views. On phase one, I think we're missing an opportunity with the cruise ships of doing something here. You know, to make it easier for the tourists to spend their money in our shops. And then getting them out of here, but I, I, I think this is a. A really cool little development area. That eventually is going to look real, really neat.
And if we are able to move down Marina lot, and Chris, and this is where we're going to come up with some ideas and I don't know if all this. Stuff we can do, but if we are able to move that Marina launch over to the other side. That is an incredibly underutilized portion of property over there that immediately we should start talking about. Storage facilities and staging facilities and parking for boats and something we can generate revenue on, if it's possible, I don't know. But we should have that conversation.
Yeah, that whole left side is so, that park there is the most underutilized land. Um, and.
Beyond lot one, yeah.
Well, I mean, lot one, it gets a lot of use, but that green space there, there's never people that hang out on it.
Fourth of July.
Well, fourth of July. But if that became the new parking lot for boats. And then the boat ramp is over there and we clean up the whole kind of hook area out there.
Yeah, yeah, and do something with this to make it a lot nicer.
But if we knew that that was possible, we knew that that could happen, then. You know, I, in a perfect world, the, the project would pay for it, but if we decide we want to do it before the project. Maybe we could get reimbursed by the project because it, because you can make an argument it's required because of the project.
Yeah, I think you, you got to be real careful here because you're talking about federal and state grants, they work, but. I can certainly see some, making a case to move that. I can see, you know, we're utilizing this for laydown, so. Eventually, we're going to have to come back in here and restore it.
Right.
And restore could be topsoil and lawn. Or whatever else we want to do.
Engineered fill and stuff else.
Yeah.
Well, that's pushing a little bit, but yeah.
But I guess Greg's question. Do we want, do we want Scott to start spending some time thinking about this?
I think so.
Yeah, for sure.
The, the one caveat I want to point out about the cruise ships, there's a funky property line for the state. That comes across about like this. I'll pass the point right here, then it comes just like this down here and all the way back out. This is not port property.
Okay, so the next obvious question is, do we want it and could we buy it?
Possibly, or at least.
Yeah.
But, but yeah, all the above, right? You know, they, they haven't, uh, they haven't argued about, um, the developments we've done out there in the past. You know, but, uh, it just to be aware that, you know, that, that point is actually not port property.
State property?
That's correct.
But couldn't we argue? Then it's.
Eminent domain, you've been there so long. No. Yeah, it's. Yeah, that's right.
I know. There's been one and two.
I think the best one we did is a lease from this thing.
Yes.
Yeah, you might be able to get a lease.
This is the whole.
And one thing too, uh, talking about the future, I'm assuming that one of those yellow rectangles is where a potential new port building would be.
I don't know if it would be a building, but it would be an office, but with that conversation and when you guys start talking about this amongst yourselves, where does? It would logically make sense for your office to be somewhere where as long as consumers need to get there is accessible. Where does John need to be in the future? What makes the most sense there? If it's.
Yeah, we need.
If it's down there, then maybe it's all on the left-hand side of all that storage, other than the big maintenance facility. If it's not. Maybe it's at the airport, maybe, I don't know, but that's part of this discussion is what makes the most sense.
Absolutely.
Uh, so as part of flushing this idea and getting started, keep that in mind, do they need to be in the same place? Do they not?
Well, and I'm thinking that at whatever point, if it's October of 2026 or earlier. You know, we need to start identifying at least a temporary, if not permanent, spot for maintenance.
That's right.
Yeah, ideally, we want to be in the water in February 26th, if not earlier. That's what we're trying to push for a building foundation.
This is a good discussion, have a good start, so. I think.
Yeah, maybe.
Getting started on this, this is a good idea.
Our maintenance needs go down when we're not taking care of the bridge. And if the chance that we do create a different SDAO that runs the parks. Then are the needs of what we need for a shop and yard just shrink dramatically with either one of those two things.
Unless the SDO that we create is, you guys run off.
That's correct. Yeah, that's correct. Who owns and cooperates might. But the net.
I got lost in the competition, the other forty is a new office, but just maintenance need to be there, you guys decide. Can we pull up, uh, uh, maritime? I saw a picture of it earlier.
I think the one, just site concept plans.
See, I think this picture is having a few buildings on that, don't worry about it too much. I just want to, this is where obviously Maritime Warehouse is. This will be a piece, and I seem to remember, this is a couple of years ago, what's the realistic usable lifespan of that building?
The maritime, the back, back, very last one.
No, 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 that's not that, that's a site plan. So don't worry about the building.
A notional build out of the future, um. Uh, that's a good question. I would say, I mean, the, the current tenants have been, were taken care of it, right? Solely on their own, so it actually is a very well-performing asset because we don't.
Cause we don't maintain. They maintain. But, um. Because we, we felt it was too big. Too much, there, we were running into too many problems to be able to deal with them.
Right.
And to be able to afford to deal with it. So we just said, if you want to stay there, every problem that develops is yours.
So a better question. So is that one is our problem?
Uh, four more years. Uh, the building probably. Ten, tops.
How much do we make a year? Paul Hardman, you can give you within 25 minutes.
We, uh, probably less than five, less than. Again, without spending any, I mean.
Right, 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 it's all, but it's all.
Our staff is currently being bombarded by individuals who want to get, get in first to redevelop.
Oh, and we're, well, we haven't even talked about it yet, but. We, we, we had conversations and I've heard everyone, every once in a while I hear something like. The, the concept of an RV park on board property has come up multiple times. I am curious, that location, if we are going to do something to me makes the most sense, it'd probably be the highest demand. Hotel rooms in this town with the culture, van culture, RV culture with our, with our visitors. Right next to the street, right next to the, um. Know our resource.
Wouldn't that be a conversation to have with us?
I, I mean, every conversation we're having.
Because some things have to redevelop it up. My first thought is how do we do it ourselves to capture the revenue ourselves? Instead of just leasing it out and letting somebody else do it.
Yeah.
Can we make more money? Another one of these things like a storage facility at a minimal cost, infrastructure cost. And a minimal maintenance cost, what would a business plan look like? For a very high-quality boutique RV park right there, if they must do it.
I think that's a good conversation to have, so. Just.
Conversation of coming in first meeting December with us is a perfect time with.
We actually, we actually scheduled the meeting with the city manager and with the redevelopment director anticipating what comes out of this meeting.
I don't think it needs, I mean, it's. And I think the way that presented to the city is that this is. And I think the way that presented to the city is that this is. It's not a visible. I understand their concern of having an R V park within the city is an eyesore, but this isn't visible.
There's nice brick walls, trees all around it, it's highly attractive area, very small relative to what you picture in your mind, but. I guess my point is, we can't afford to take care of what's there, we know that. We're not gonna go to warehouse there probably, so we're not gonna afford that when the time comes anyway. So either we're leasing that out for X. Or we need to figure out something to do there that doesn't cost us more than we can afford.
And there's a huge need for an R V.
Part of it could be parking to offset all the congestion on the hook as well.
That's a good point.
Safety concern right there.
I agree with all of that.
What is?
That's a low, another really low investment that year round, you will fill that place.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Year round. For parking. Church, April parking.
Oh, and the premium you can get in the summertime?
Yes.
Which, I don't know if you guys are open, I'd love for them to start chatting this city, but this is not a next year question, this is something. That won't come up for four, but if we wanted to move that direction, we should know what we can do and what we can't do.
When I hear R V parks, I picture. Vancouver R V parks. So it's hard for me to picture what a nice looking boutique R V park would look like, but I'd like.
Go to the bridge tomorrow and go drive through their R V park. It's hidden, it's beautiful, you drive into there, it's well manicured, they don't allow. Rundowns, you know, there's a time period you have to be out of there, you can't just go live there and uh. So I think we can, we can structure it so that it can't become that look.
Right.
You know, like it's it's a ten day maximum stay or.
We need to be ready to enforce that.
Yes. You you might get a crappy vehicle in there, but they're only be there for ten days. You know, you limit how long anybody could be there and that solves the live there problem, and I think that's where the city is. And I'm where I I've actually managed. Two different R V parks in Newport and on Southern Lake Bay, so this is an area where I do have some actual experience in operations.
Just these ideas with a lower upfront development cost for the board, where all the revenue could be realized by the board.
Well, I mean, you don't even have to worry about a dump station when you drive across the street.
Well, you could have full hookup, you could have full hookup.
They have rules that your rig is more than ten years old, don't bother coming in.
Yeah, exactly.
If you come through the gate and it's not looking proper, they can turn you around.
Yep, yep, yep. I think. We would run into some issues with that as a public agency versus a private sector, which can. Kind of decide who comes and goes from your property, we sort of can't make those decisions.
But we can make.
But we can have limits that would do that for us.
Right.
We have, we there's ways to do that. Yeah. Either way, uh, we charged premiums for big events, you know, so that's another way to generate access revenue. And um, and then as far as the operations, you know, we we had our dock workers walk through the R V park, obviously we don't have dock workers like we do. There, but they would just, as you guys are doing your rounds, whether it's whoever's gonna be the night security in the future. You just work it into their ramp.
Yeah, yeah. I I personally think this is a cool little idea. But I see this as a. Kind of a a phase two. We've got. Lot one hundred, that I think we ought to be putting a lot of effort in. Maybe the second one is over there by the marina. And this one is. Probably number three, if we've got people in there and they're good for another four years. I wouldn't say let's go spend a whole bunch of money on it this year, but.
No, but we need to start.
Yeah, the conversation, because you can't do anything there until you're five, so have the conversation, then. By the time that will be scrolls around, we've already made a decision.
We might even have the zoning rechanged or redone to do that by that.
But let's not wait four years to have that discussion, let's. Start it now and then be able to make an informed decision before it even.
So the key thing is to get it on the long term plan and activities that we gotta do this year, next year. To support being ready to go into the ground when this thing's up. We're not starting from scratch, we're already there.
What else?
You want us to recap what we've heard or?
Why don't, I don't.
You want to just do some. Some quick minutes in the next. Hours and send it out.
That'll be just fine, and then if we if we feel like anything was meant, we can just respond to that.
Hi, everybody. You just can't see me. Let's see. I I believe in the beginning of your conversation, that the commissioners alluded to, it doesn't. Make a lot of sense to talk about the marina or that whole area right now um. For long term, just because we don't know what's going on with the bridge. The one thing I would say though is the waterfront, which is. What I manage and also our biggest money loser. Is are are we gonna talk at all about the possibilities of? Parks and Rec taking over the areas that the port can't develop, is that something you guys would like to talk about? Or is this not the appropriate time?
I don't have any information on that or any.
I could, I could uh. Just I've talked to Mark Kock and I've talked to uh Abigail. And so um, from my understanding that there was, and I know you've been involved in this as well. I did talk to Mike Oats, uh, county uh chair. And he, it sounded like maybe a year eighteen months ago, there was some consideration of a reorganization of the parks and rec. That would accommodate county and city and port parks in addition to the needs of the parks and rec district. It sounded that that maybe hit a little bit of a dead end in that there was more of an interest in focusing just on the pool aspects. So um. You know, I think that there is some interest in exploring that, but I think everybody, I think it sounds like the Parks and Rec District is kind of re. Kind of reassembling how they want to approach that topic, um, and then that's about the limit of my knowledge. There was a study that was done. Four years ago now. So where, where now, I can't remember, we some like the city or the Parks and Rec brought in a consultant. That consultant met with all of us. And basically what was determined out of that was the port was the ones with the equipment, the manpower, and the ones who would have to take it over. And instead of like offloading some of the problems, the problems got put on us. So I think it sort of hit a dead end right there.
I want to research that before giving something up, I would like to research.
Yeah.
Investment we need to make in your department to take their stuff on.
Can I, I'll just give you my my take on this issue, so. Darryl, approximately how much is the uh waterfront recreation event center in a rear or in the negative, is it like two or three hundred?
Thousand. Um, I wanna say close to two, we lose about two fifty a year, I believe.
So what what we, the the beauty of the parks and rec concept is that they would be going out for a new permanent tax rate. And so that becomes the revenue. For that government activity, I D parks. If we, if the ports doing it and all of the other agencies are paying a fee to the port. To take that activity on, they would actually be paying out of their own general uh general funds, a premium. Because not only do they have to cover the expenses of their parks, they would then be needing to pay what we're losing. So i- if if they're willing to do that, that's that's great. But if you were in their shoes, how would you do that?
Now, just to jump in for a second, it applies to this, but everything else we talked about, I think as soon as you get the CFO in place. I I think you gotta take a really hard look at charging practice. Because the reports that we have now out of finance, while they're the great reports. There's, there's all kinds of issues with charging practice, so do we really, really know by operating center where we truly stand? And I would offer a, no, we don't. So I think as part of this effort. We gotta have a concerted effort to get our financial books lined up with an operating center. So we can basically see. Profit and loss by operating center, so we know how big of a problem each area has. And we can make a a realistic decision of. Do we shed it, do we do something with it, what are we gonna do with it? That's, that's a real problem. Problem number two, I think, and it's still part of charging practice. Is this whole thing of allocation. I think is terrible, it's somebody's opinion. Of where people are spending their time, I think for a year. The CFO needs to take a hard look at doing some real. Charge timing on their time sheets so we know where we're really spending the money. And then after that first year, you can talk about, do you wanna allocate and go forward, but. We're running blind right now and I just.
I think Kevin's been pretty clear in his, and I'm gonna ask you for an update on that since we're just kind of getting out of the topic real quick. He's been pretty clear with other kind of reports that are gonna be required. Continue to report to this new person, um, so if you give us an update on that, that'd be great. Semantics, we're not in the market for a CFO, you're having a financial director.
Okay.
Um, but you wanna update us where you're at?
Yes, so I I've let uh Ben and Christie both know as the personnel, members of the personnel committee. Uh Jensen has completed their uh initial review of the finance director position. There were uh four out of five uh qualifying candidates. That two retired uh city managers interviewed and told a depth. From that, they they recommended four. Uh, but uh they ranked them one through four, and I felt like three of them were were worth interviewing. The uh backgrounds of those three candidates were shared with the personnel committee. And so far, I'm I've been given the go ahead and start the interview process to to pin that down. One of the things that I've learned through the short amount of time that I've been in the position is that uh the current uh. Finance program that we have, Great Plains, does have the ability to do automated reports. That not only would be beneficial to the public and the board, but also for the program managers and. Uh, project directors, so it can be done, uh, we, one of our candidate, two of our candidates actually would be able to do that in house. Currently, if we were to go out and do that, we would be paying a third party entity to do those reporting. But I think we've got the potential for a candidate to do that ourselves. So I think it's, we need to get through this audit season, we need to get that finance director on board, but certainly by the end of this fiscal year, ending June. I wanna have those reports, uh, you know, start issuing those out, making sure we find errors on the charted accounts. Because that's kind of the lifeblood of those forms. And I think in the following fiscal year, they should be dialed in. Where our finance team can print a button, just like you would in QuickBooks. And you'd get a P and L, they wouldn't be audited. Documents, but they would be pretty current, pretty clear, and then that, everybody associated with the port. Would be able to do the checks and balances necessary to. Know what we're doing.
I think that's great, that, but word of caution going forward, if we're successful in getting federal grant for this bridge. And the port is gonna charge some time. To the bridge contract for support, which you should do. If you're working on it. You gotta be real careful with charging practice. Cause if they find that you're doing an allocation and they disagree with, which they will automatically. You could put us in some real jeopardy, so. Timing is gonna become pretty critical here.
Or you're not gonna be able to charge the. Yeah, ab- absolutely, I mean, a perfect example of that is the lobbying expenses, so. You know, for the bridge replacement effort, a significant amount of money goes into lobbying and government affairs work, those are ineligible. Expenses for grants, and so we are starting that process of delineating. Uh, expenses that are not, that are bridge related, but not reimbursable by grants. Because Ben and I have talked about this, is that we need to start showing what the true. Costs of running this project are, Genevieve's time. You know, my uh, the executive director's time, finance spends a lot of time on it. Patty spends a lot of time supporting the bi-state working group, we need to start uh. Doing those charging uh practices so that when it comes to the new bridge authority reimbursing the port. For our expenses, we've got solid uh support.
So let me give you a kind of an example of what we're probably gonna be looking like from federal. I'm a federal inspector, I can walk into this project anytime that I want to, I announce. I can walk over to Kevin. And Kevin, uh, let me see your time sheet, please, and you have to show him the time sheet. And you charged yesterday to this. Number and that number and this number. What are those numbers? What do they really mean?
Right.
And how can you justify to me that you actually charged it correctly? You need to be able with yourself, if you don't. You just got wrote up certain. So that's kind of like what we're doing, and this is to every employee of the board. It's not just the executive director, they can walk in and do it to anybody.
So I I guess the uh, you know, the short story is, is I think that the new incoming finance director. Um, has already been put on notice by Jensen. That the reporting needs to be more transparent and frequent.
No need to be some policy between you and that person, I guess, that relates to exactly how it's gonna be tracked.
Yeah.
Implement it right away.
Yeah, that's, and that's something we'll have to work through, and I, you know, I think that there's a lot of programs out there for automated, so you're not doing it on paper, you're doing it on your phone. I think. Speaking uh Mike to your tracking projects. We we have talked a lot about getting a uh. You know, a tracker, you know, a way that we use, we use planner and it works, but it doesn't track it ideally like to locations. We have run into a problem with getting software that is compatible with Great Plains. So there is there. People aren't really designing stuff around Great Plains anymore, so the the newest stuff isn't. May be difficult to get to tie to our.
I think your your finance person's gotta take a hard look at that. I just got one other comment, cause I know we're running out of time, the other concern that I've got for today. You take a look at the projects we talked about. Most of them go right back to Greg. And does Greg have enough? Support to be able to do all of this, I I asked this several months ago, and the answer was no. But what are we doing? We're gonna be here two, two months from now, we're gonna have the same discussion and we haven't made much progress.
The answer is no, you wanna see that addressed in the next budget.
We we've talked about this uh issue, in fact, as early as recently as today. That depending, when we bring you back the priority list after running through the criteria. If there's a number of projects that we need to hit the ground running on, and Greg is currently managing a minimum of four projects right now, and they're underway. If we need to bring in some additional resources, one option that the commission can consider. Is hiring a consultant, a project, a consultant project manager. With their only task being get this project done. And we can do that by project or by pair of projects or whatever. Uh, whatever uh the commission feels is necessary to get. One or more projects done by one or more contracted project managers.
Raise up, bring us options.
Yeah.
Bring us options, my first question will be, why not just hire another employee that can also assist somewhere else? And in the future as well, but that's it, that's not the best financial or use of time, tell us why.
There is to consider that I'm probably just about to announce my retirement. That being said, you're you're going to need, you're gonna need to have somebody who can do your projects from here, I've been. I've been project managing all the large stuff for the last four years here, and some. There is really, we don't really have staff right now that has that experience. So. Yeah, so it's something we've gotta think about, and that's unfortunately, that's kind of in the short term, not the long term.
Well, then I think we really need to look at hiring a.
But I think even if we go out and obviously replace John's position. There's gonna be enough capacity that there will need to be some other.
I agree with that.
Source.
Yeah. They also pull in sometimes, it's a work retirement, they ask.
And we have to evaluate and consider.
Their own timeline, you know? That is a duty of being on.
Uh, hey, one thing, is just putting kind of a notice about the CFA and when the commission wants to review that.
I'd like to find, oh, I saw the first time this at the end of last week, then I saw another draft. When there's a, I don't want to call it final draft, but when there's an acceptable draft, why don't we send it to the commission? Put legal comment in there as well, but anything that we have in there, commission needs some time to read this and digest it. Come back with questions, because I read it once and I need to read it twelve more times. There's going to be a section with any clarification on some questions, and the commission needs time to do that. So when that's appropriate, I think everybody would like to see it, and then we need some time to digest it. Then we need to come back and have, I don't care if it's a work session, or if it is just some, a good period of time to discuss it and get our questions answered, because everybody's gonna have some. There will, some will have legal questions, some will have practical questions about it, and so we need a little time first. I don't want to start nitpicking little things right now. There's no point. We need to have that time.
So, so in perspective, this thing's been moving around for a number of months. So it's been developed and reviewed and changed, developed, reviewed, changed. Where we are right now, the intent is that the CFA version is out to everybody for final legal review, final comments from all of the entities, not just the port.
Well, the only people that really is gonna come down to voting on this and are sitting right here. No one else gets a vote. So I'm not on their time, I'm not on their timeline. Really, Port Hood River says no to it, then what?
Then we start all over. But, but every other commission can do the same thing. They have to review.
We're the final, we're the final. But I want everybody here to have time. I know you understand it.
All I'm saying is, let's not wait for the next version incorporating other comments from the other.
Oh, I just knew that there were some, there were, even just this week, there were some back and forth discussions, and then we were getting an updated version, I should say, not a final, is what I'd like to see. As soon as there is that updated one, which I might have now.
I, I think that is the most current, up-to-date version, the one that Anna sent out, I believe, Monday, Monday.
I sent it to.
I got one today.
And to Kelly.
That's good.
Yeah.
When that's appropriate, let's get it to everybody. That way we have, we can get to work on that.
And I think you're gonna be preparing, finishing the memo sometime this week or next week.
Correct.
And then at that point, you'll send that to the full commission.
Um, I, I think, Jerry, I, I think it's, we'll be providing it to you and you, and then I think it's up to you to, you were ready to submit that.
Okay.
And then in our conversations, you were thinking that if we're gonna kind of prepare a schedule, that the January meeting is when you felt comfortable as a, as a target point.
I think that'll be the first time, given the holidays, given schedule, that five people will be able to commit a little bit of time all at the same time. Uh, but that should slow us down from reviewing it and getting questions and thoughts together.
Yeah.
And if there's an, at that time, we can send, we can send it out. And if people have questions in the meantime, it might take legal or anyone else a little bit of time to compile, we can forward those along.
Yeah.
Because there's no, I don't want to slow anything down. I hope they'll get their questions answered on time we do.
So do you anticipate then some type of a, a work session in December where?
In January.
Okay, so that would be the first work session, not a decision point.
You can't make a decision point about that first.
I don't know. That's why I was wondering, if December, if you wanted to have the work session after you've had a month to review it, do you have a work session in December after a month of having, having the chance?
If commissioners' schedules allow a second meeting in mid-ish, we're approaching holiday there. Around the middle of it, so commissioners' schedules allow it. I think it would be wide. But that depends on everybody.
Okay.
Okay, sounds good. Kevin, I got one question about, as we move forward with the lay-down area, as Mike was showing on that one diagram, do we have any obligation to reimburse OSMB for grant funding on that grant?
I think, you know, there was something called, I believe it's six F, I always get six F and four F mixed up, but probably it was back in the seventies, the port received some soil and water conservation grants to build the boat launch, to build, build a bunch of the docks, to install electrical water sewer lines there at the Marina One building.
Yeah.
And so the issue is the boundary in those grant documents was much larger than the actual projects. So the entire port property, including Marina One and the port office and your maintenance yard, is all within that grant. And so the question is, as we get closer to permitting, are they gonna say, hey, if you're moving the port bu- building, are you gonna need to mitigate that by going to find an equal amount of recreational property somewhere else in the vicinity? And in talking with Mark and Abigail and others, they just laughed at me. Like, good luck trying to find any significant recreational land. So it's gonna be a big, big challenge to, to mitigate that.
Well, the, the approach that we're trying to take is one of reason and logic. So we're gonna try and meet with these folks and, and paint the big picture for them.
Yeah.
We're not taking away the Marina. That agreement was never intended to replace a bridge.
Yes.
Okay, this is a special circumstance. We want the Marina. We will leave the boat ramp there. We'd like to put a second one in. It's a safety issue. I mean, we could do it, keep the parking lot there, but the challenge is keeping it safe for users in the middle of a very heavy construction field. It's crazy to do that. I think we could probably get OSHA involved in it. And we could really stir things up.
Is the Marina stuff already dealt with in the mitigation chapter of the ROD?
Would you say Marina stuff, really?
The, just the impact we're discussing with Marina, are they already part of that?
So no, those are, those are pending, pending decisions that were, so it goes to the US Park Service, and then they kicked that down to the Oregon recreation, Parks and Recreation. They are currently doing, they know this project is happening, but that will be a separate comment outside of me. So that's down the road. But for them to do the analysis on the boundaries and all the grant that were done in the seventies, it's gonna take them eighteen months even to get to us.
So sorry for the bureaucratic.
Yeah.
Summary, so I don't know if that answered your question. Well, you, you told me that we're involved in sorting through that.
Yeah.
And that's, that's what I wanted to just be sure that we were aware. We're accepting grant money right now for that launch, I think, right now. And so I just want to be sure that we're not putting ourselves in a situation that not only do we have to pay to move it, but we have to take back some of that grant money.
Well, my hope is that, because if you close the thing down for any more than six months, that's considered a pain. So if we can hopefully do some flagging and some, you know, safety controls. See, Mike?
Okay.
During, you know, construction, if we can just have safety measures, and it's not a full.
That could be written right into the contract for the bridge construction.
And that's one way to aware.
Yeah, yeah.
Commissioner Mark, I have a couple of bridge-related meetings he has to go to, he's gonna have a hard time. I mean, I think we can just have a regular, a quick regular session. Are we all good on that? You're good on it? We'll see your report from you and.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, Jennifer, you summarize everything, get it out.
Then we can adjourn that work session and open a regular session. And all we have on the agenda is, since the one note I would make is on the General Counsel appointment, just a quick explanation how that worked. Kevin and Jerry and Hannah and I went through this process over the last two weeks. Uh, we had five applicants, three of whom we chose to interview, two happened to be local, uh, which we felt fortunate on. After that, we had a discussion and unanimous choice was made to retain Campbell Phillips. And so that is why my recommendation is on there today. Um, hopefully, with your consent, they will start working immediately with Jerry and Hannah.
That'll be today. Welcome.
As of today, so, but Jake Sharp is gonna continue, obviously, through the rest of this month and as needed next month, as well in the country. So there will be some overlap there. I just wanted to comment on that. If there aren't any questions on it, all we need is a motion to.
How many motions are there?
On there? I as well. Consent passed. Thank you for that and welcome.
And before you adjourn, I just want to. No, 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 go ahead.
There were a couple commissioners. Usually we have a section of commissioners, and then they need to say any comments. I know there's at least one. Um, so I hope you go ahead and if anyone else has, this is your time as well.
Yeah, we talked about earlier in the last meeting about commissioner compensation policy regarding to that. And Jenny was on vacation, so I didn't go full scoop on them, but Jennifer research and so we're gonna be, we have small talks tomorrow. Under ORS 19890, I painted out the information to you. Under state law, we can go ahead and compensate commissioner up to fifty dollars per day. And right now, the court provides up to a hundred dollars per month. And it was my understanding that commissioners were being docked fifty dollars per meeting they were not attending by the previous administration. And the way I read, I'm an attorney, but the way I read it, that is not correct. It's a hundred dollars per month. It's not fifty dollars per meeting. And I think that should be addressed, and we should look at maybe restructuring that anyway. As far as, Genevieve had met some, I called Jennifer Day, that was no, but.
Okay.
She was other comparisons, you know, city council, it's two twenty-five a month, kind of commissioner, you get fifty dollars a year. Um, but I think we need to readdress that. Make sure we got clarity that because I know for a fact for the last twenty years, it just cost every one of us money to sit here. And to sit there and take money away from us, when it's misinterpreted anyway by individuals who is no longer here. It just needs to be addressed. And so I'd like to maybe have staff look at it and come back with a proposal to us to maybe restructure it. And Genevieve had a very good point too, far as social justice, far as, you know, I think, you know, again, Wade's a good example, is that she didn't run again because his financial can't afford to do those things. And I think, you know, it limits the board drawing new people in to be board members, who they can't afford to do this. Can't afford to take off and have childcare and lose their job or now away from their job. So I think you can maybe readdress it and bring it up to twenty percent.
So everybody are figuring out what's gonna set to do that.
It'll be in a form of resolution, admitting governance policy, just that section, and we'll, we'll do some research and get some good comments and have a better organization. It'd be nice to maybe have.
Yeah, first meeting.
You know, when you respect it, it's not, it's not.
Is it money, salary?
Yeah. Yes. Yeah. Service is not.
No, don't. Yeah.
You do.
I just want to give a shout out to Jerry and to Anna. I just, you know, we went to Jerry's going away or retirement party at his law firm on, uh, last Thursday. And I mean, there was probably at least a hundred people were there in and out and, uh, and Jerry was nice enough, I think he might have had a couple, but he took me back to the meeting. And there were, like, literally, there's three dozen filing cabinets that started in the seventies. Port Hood River, Port Hood River, Port Hood River. And just over the five years that I've been working on the bridge replacement project, you just have been a wonderful person to get historical information about the project, not just the bridge, but others. And thank you for your friendship and your professional guidance.
I've enjoyed it.
And it's been a really great experience. I think I speak for many here at the port that we all appreciate your service to the port.
Thank you.
And can we, we will be putting a, a monument down along the waterfront at a place where Jerry does like to, the block is gonna come time, and so we'll have something that commemorates his service to the port on port property in the coming spring, so.
Actually, let me, we'll have it back.
Great.
I can't think of a better way to end the meeting. We're adjourned.
Javelin, guys, appreciate it.